Okay, everyone. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, June 25th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we ask that you would receive our thanks tonight for this great town. Though not perfect, we know that we are blessed, and we thank you for that. We ask that you would touch and be with our first responders, God, that you would have your hand of protection upon them, give them strength and encouragement. We thank you for them. We thank you, God, for those that have taken up the mantle to govern us, and we ask that you would just let your wisdom fall upon them and that you would help them in all that they do to help guide this town into a great future. We give you all thanks for what you're going to do, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. January, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Present.
Councilwoman Newsle?
Here.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Here.
President Bella?
Here.
Seven present.
All seven are present, thank you. Mr. Griffin, do we actually have an employee of the month?
We do, Mr. President.
Let's do that, thank you.
Thank you. I can see by your face we managed to surprise you. I'm so happy. Please join us. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, again, I thank you for this program. We wish we could recognize everyone, but it's a nice way that the council is established of recognizing people of merit in our workforce who every day report to work and do their work ably and professionally. And Ms. Thomas, you do some of our hardest work as a code enforcement officer because you never see many of our residents at their best. And you still come to work cheerfully and professionally and ably, no small trick. So, do you want to read this? Thank you. I'm not going to allow you to do that. There is a certificate of recognition, and we did our very best to compose words that we thought were appropriate for you. Chief Nucis, please.
Tiffany is a faithful exemplar of public service, quietly enforcing the ordinances and laws of the town of Maryville with professionalism and courage. She exhibits loyalty to the Constitution of the United States and the state of Indiana by her devotion to duty and the rule of law. It is also noted that she has risen to the current needs of the town by undertaking additional duties. Her dedication to the town has not gone unnoticed. We are what we repeatedly do. Excellence, therefore, is not an act, but a habit.
That's by Aristotle, yes. I thought you liked the Aristotle reference. Thank you for your excellence every day. Thank you. You want us to get away, the other way? Do you want us to get the other side? I need to be in the back. I'm feeling a little self-conscious. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
Moving on tonight to public hearings. Mr. Svetnov, can you address the first item there? It's ordinance 2424.
2424. The proof of publication has been reviewed. It is proper and in order, and it is time we should conduct any and all public hearings on this matter.
Very good, then. We'll be opening to the public for ordinance 24-24 on second reading. It's the ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana authorizing the issuance of Town of Maryville, Indiana Economic Development Tax Increment Revenue Bonds, including bond anticipation notes, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto, referencing the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Northwest Indiana, Inc. Is there any public comment tonight? Seeing none, back to the council. Is there a motion for this ordinance? For or against?
A motion to defer. Second.
Motion by Councilor Hardaway to defer. And who did the second?
Haynes Edwards.
Thank you. Open for discussion to defer. Seeing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Newsle?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, we will defer that ordinance to a later date. Moving on tonight to the Town Attorney Review of Publication of Notice for Ordinance 24-25. Mr. Svetnov?
Again, Mr. President, I've reviewed the proof of publication. It is in order, and we should proceed to any and all public hearings, so.
Very good. Is there any public comment tonight on ordinance 24-25? It's the ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Maryville authorizing the issuance of Town of Maryville, Indiana Economic Development Tax Increment Revenue Bonds, including bond anticipation notes, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto, referencing Andrian High School Initiative. Any public comment? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll owe three minutes.
Brian Massarch, 201 East 68th Place. The Town of Maryville should not be giving money to a religious institution. It's clearly set out in the Bill of Rights, a separation of church and state. It is absolutely insane that the Catholic Church just received $150 million donation for their schools, which includes Andrian, and Maryville would need to give a million dollars. Maryville could use a million dollars for more firemen, more policemen, more code enforcement. There's a ton of things that if you actually listen to the residents, there's a lot of things that you could spend a million dollars on that they want. We feel that Andrian can take care of itself. They're doing pretty good. The Catholic Church is doing pretty good. No foul, no harm. We don't need to do this, period.
Yeah, I'm Michael Minogue, 250 East 69th Place, Maryville, Indiana. I've been a resident for 30 years. My question is, does the town have an ethics requirement that requires you all to report any conflicts of interest that might be on this or any other proposals that the town has? The point on this is if you have an advertisement, if you work for, work with, or are an employee of, or have them as contractors for you, you should excuse yourself and publicly notify that. So if you have business with, on your personal life with the Catholic Church in this case, you should publicly disclose that and not vote on this. My question is, does that exist for this board? Because I was unable to find it. I found one reference to that you're a member of an ethics committee, but I did not find any statement of, here are the ethics as a board. I would love an answer to that question. What is your ethic policy as a Board of Directors? And public disclosure of any conflicts of interest?
Okay.
Thank you.
I slid in here right in time. Darian Collins, 2505 West 65th Avenue. I assume we have public comment on the Andrian issue?
Correct.
There wasn't there an article in the newspaper less than two weeks ago saying that the dioceses had donated $120 million? Did you see that?
Yeah, $150 million.
Yeah, for the Archdiocese of Gary, for schools. That's right. They don't need our million dollars. They don't need our million dollars. They don't need our million dollars. I asked about a splash pad for our kids last September. A splash pad in one of the parks for our kids. Hammond has a splash pad. You go to the ballpark in Crown Point, they have a splash pad. Portage has a splash pad. Use our money for our public residents, our kids. Andrian don't need our money. When I saw that $150 million, the first thing I thought is that every one of you should say, oh, they don't need our money. They have plenty of money. Now, we voted for you all to be responsible and to represent us well. The reason that they gave them the $150 million is because Andrian wants to leave Maryville. And they probably didn't have the money to leave, and now they do. Now, I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but there's a reason why whatever deal they were trying to make to build that new school fell through. Now, we don't know what it is, but $150 million just didn't appear for no reason. Don't give them any of our money. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to clarify a couple of things for the general public.
Mr. Pettit?
Number one, the million dollars is being set aside or given to the Andrian Initiative as an access point. There is a need for a secondary access that's been identified to extend Georgia Street north of 61st Avenue through two parcels into the backside of Andrian. For clarification, on the Big Shoulders donation that the White Family Foundation made to the Catholic Diocese, it is $150 million for 20 schools across the diocese. That includes Andrian, Bishop Noel, Marquette, and the 17 parochial schools that are in the diocese. Jacob Knazier is in the audience as principal of Andrian, and I will tell you, someone mentioned they voted for us. This has been a platform of mine for my last two campaigns to keep Andrian in the Town of Maryville. And I told Jacob over my dead body, would Andrian leave Maryville? And I stand by that. Now, I got reelected in the primary and in the fall by substantial amounts. So the residents of Ward 6 verified my decision-making on this council that I've been doing for the last 20 years. So I think I can speak from experience.
That's one ward out of seven. That's one ward out of seven.
Ms. Collins, you're out of order.
The residents here say no.
Ms. Collins, you can't do that.
We are saying no.
Please sit down, ma'am.
They're saying no.
Please sit down.
We're saying no.
We hear you.
Yeah.
We heard the public comment. Mr. Pettit, did you want to complete your?
That's all.
Okay. Is there any other public comment?
I have a comment. As the treasurer and as a resident of the town, I have nothing against Andrian and Catholic schools in general. It's the principle that I'm concerned about, that we're borrowing money and giving it to someone. And that's a bad precedent in itself, in addition to giving money to a private institution. And yes, we will be building a road, but I believe that's going to be a private road. I don't know if that's going to be a public road.
It's going to be a public road.
So, whatever case, we shouldn't be using public funds for projects that are private in nature, particularly when we have so many needs in the Town of Maryville.
But, Mr. January, we've done an 80/20 split on Mississippi Street from Marcella all the way down to 101st Avenue. And in the last phase, the old cliche, if you build it, they will come, we spent 20% of $6 million on Mississippi Street. We now have almost 3 million square feet of industrial building because we widened and built the road with the TIF money. People, please keep in mind, we are doing a bond issue, but this is coming off of the draw that we receive. And you reported it last week, Mr. January, $9.1 million we receive in our allocation areas. We give $400,000 already to the Maryville School Corporation on a five-year grant. We're proposing to do the same thing with Boys and Girls Club and with Andrian off the top of the TIF draw. It doesn't, $9.1 million to give away $700,000 to three worthy projects? I'll vote for that every single day for my residents in Ward 6 and twice on Sunday. Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Pittman, could you explain again the finances? It's not a million dollars all at once. We're not borrowing money. Could we get some clarity on that, please? Because.
It's a bond.
He's going to explain it again.
The expert's going to explain it.
Okay, you can stop.
Tom Pittman from Barnes &amp; Thorneburg Law Firm. The, as Shaun was saying, the essence of this is an expenditure of TIF revenues over a period of time. Over a period of 10 years, a certain amount would be paid annually to the recipients. So there's no property taxes involved. The TIF revenues are going to be what they're going to be, so it's not as if funds are being raised for this purpose, but instead funds that are coming in, you have to have expenditure decisions made with regard to how that money's going to be spent. And so the issue is, are these projects worthy to get a portion of the tax increment revenues over time? So there's no obligation beyond the payments annually of TIF funds. It's done in the form of a bond because that's what the law requires, but it really is more in the nature of a long-term contribution agreement.
If the TIF cancels the taxes, will that become taxable property as regular property? Effectively, potentially lowering my taxes?
It could, but it depends on a lot of factors.
But the TIF money is tax money that is paid to the TIF rather than paid to the town?
No, because the town would get a small portion of the TIF, theoretically. The TIF is, the TIF captures.
The town and the school would get their share of that money?
They wouldn't get a share of the money because the amount of money that can be raised for these various taxing units, and Michael, help me out here, is limited. So it might result in a usually insignificant tax decrease, but it wouldn't raise any more money for the taxing entity, because the amount they can raise is already being raised, and it's a maximum.
Yeah, so my taxes would potentially go down if we can't raise more money?
To some extent. Michael, you understand this better than I do.
Mr. President, with relation, may I? Mr. Pittman, as you know, this is an allocation area that already existed.
Yeah.
If, question is posed that if we did not capture the AV that was there, we are already capturing the AV. Given the size of the tax base of Maryville, which is three times my former bill, almost four, the amount of captured AV that they have would not be appreciable, it would be measurable by some, but not appreciable on anyone's tax rate. And the amount of operating money that the council gets if the town gets to operate is limited by the maximum levy, subject to the circuit breaker impacts. We don't have very many of those yet in Maryville, because our aggregate rate for 2024, I believe, paid 2024, is $2.47 per $100 of assessed valuation, of which roughly 44 cents of that is the Town of Maryville's. I'm close, if I'm not on the money. So we don't have a lot of loss. So if we didn't, we're already raising the money. So if we didn't do this project, it would have no impact on your tax rate one way or another.
But the money could be used for all the taxes.
The council is within the limits of the law, which we rely on, Mr. Pittman, to help us, because there are very strict rules about the use of tax increment and its public purposes. But there are other uses that could be there. The council as a body is deciding the policy for that tonight.
But like an allocation zone, if it's in the town, if Andrian is not in an allocation zone, so you're spending money outside that, in the R.
Again, Mr. President, if I may. Mr. Pittman, is it not true that we're, if we're adjoining that physically, that would be a lawful use of that money?
Yes.
Provided we establish in our redevelopment plan that there's an economic development purpose?
Yes.
In this case, they're not leaving because they are an anchor there.
Right.
And secondly, it touches it, so it's all right, and it does serve the interests of the larger purposes of the redevelopment area?
There is no reason to touch that Andrian property.
But it's proximate.
Right. The Andrian, it does, the Andrian project does not have to be in the TIF district for the TIF revenues to be applied in ways that serve or benefit the TIF district. This project is really viewed as benefiting the entire town of Maryville because of the kind of, you know, the sort of larger impact on the town of having a prestigious school with a long history continue to reside in the town. Is the town better off with or without Andrian High School and its boundaries?
Is it not true that Andrian and religious institutions should not pay property taxes? So it's actually not a benefit to the residents in Maryland either?
And it isn't required to pay property taxes to be eligible for a TIF incentive. It isn't, that's not a requirement.
Is there any other purpose other than Andrian for the road?
It's a public road, right, so.
Yes. It would be dedicated town right of way for Georgia Street.
So there would be.
Are there any other businesses or anybody else using that road other than Andrian?
Vod Self Storage could use that.
Regency Park.
Regency Park could use that with a curb cut, yes.
It's also to divert the kind of congestion you experience on Broadway.
Yes. The Broadway exit at 3 o'clock with Andrian students and parents leaving would alleviate that traffic congestion. You're right, Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pitt.
Mr. Pittman, I have a question. Mr. President, if I may. What, so because the residents in our community are asking about splash pads and things of that nature, that the money could be used toward, what other uses could the money be used towards? Because you said it was, it had to be within the allocations of, it had to be within certain ramifications.
Well, it has to, the projects that the money is spent for have to serve a redevelopment or economic development purpose in the town. That's the fundamental rule on the use of the tax increment revenues. And that's why you end up with projects that either retain employees or create employees and, you know, maintain payrolls, that sort of thing, that bear on the economic health of the town itself. Now, recreation for economic development purposes is sometimes done if there is bound to be a connection between the recreational facility and the attractiveness of the town. So I wouldn't conclude off the top that it isn't something that the town could consider, but again, it's a priority of the Redevelopment Commission. It's how they prioritize the potential uses.
And the priority, that prioritizing comes from the council?
From the Redevelopment Commission.
Or the needs of the town?
From the Redevelopment Commission.
Redevelopment Commission. But, Tom, isn't the entire town, we talk about TIF districts and where the money goes and all this, and as a lot of people know, I've been doing this a long time, the entire town is a redevelopment district, correct?
It is.
Okay. Then we have all of the different allocation areas.
Right.
Which, properties in those allocation areas, 100% of their tax dollars come to the Town of Maryville, as opposed to being divided up by the five specific entities, school, county, library, town, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're eligible, the entire town is a district, which would make any project anywhere eligible. I also want to remind my colleagues and the general public that the Dean and Barbara White Community Center started out as a two-bond issue project, that everyone, I think anyways, if I'm misreading it, thinks was, is a great idea. We needed it in the town, the kids needed it in the town. That was the Maryville Road TIF District backing, wasn't it, Tom? And a GO bond.
Yes.
Since we redid that as an RDC with all the big boxes, all the big boxes are now paying that debt service on the Dean and Barbara White, the $25 million, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. President?
I would say that if we can spend a million dollars on a road for Andrian, that we can pay and fix the parking lot that's almost directly across the street for Andrian that has.
That's, and that, Deidra, that was, keep in, keep in mind, keep in mind, all these posters around here, and people have come to the community meeting, Maryville Momentum, we talked about the two shopping centers and that the RDC, when the plan is done and we can get with the owners, that the RDC would step up and take care of those two areas with the parking, landscaping, walkways, all that stuff. We discussed that at Maryville Momentum public meetings, did we not?
Yes.
We did.
If you're going to do one, do the other one.
Well.
Why not do the other first?
Well, one of the points that I, go ahead. Does you want to answer?
We're going to be done with public comment here in a second, but go ahead. Shaun, I wanted to say something, didn't you? Go ahead, Eric.
So, Pettit, you said that the bonds went out for the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, and nobody seems to have had a problem with that, but I also feel, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and more too, that there would be more things for our children to do in the community center, and it has not been. So I think that's why a lot of the residents are upset, because there's, our children don't have anything to do inside of the community.
Well, and Shaun, I know you were not at last night's workshop, and we had a long discussion, and I was the one that also brought, along with the previous administration, the Boys and Girls Club. And ladies, what did I say at the council workshop last night? Let's get the Boys and Girls Club after-school program out of the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Let's authorize the $2 million so they can build on the three acres that they bought, so that those four rooms can be used by Maryville residents. But we decided to defer that bond issue tonight because there's more discussion, and we wanted to talk to Boys and Girls Club. So there's, there's give and take, there's all kinds of other things going on here. Again, these are three good projects. Maryville Schools is nowhere near a TIF, is nowhere near an allocation area on the east side of Broadway, but we had no problem giving them $400,000. But these other two projects, we start raising the question.
Our kids are not there. Why can't Maryville have an easy access?
Okay, guys, please, if you haven't spoken already, approach the podium and make your comment, okay? Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Mr. January, finish up, please.
Yes, sir. The major objection, I mean, there are a number of things. I appreciate everybody's comments, but the thing that I really want to emphasize in why I ran to be the treasurer of the town is that this town is not a charity. I mean, there are certain things to do that I believe that President Bella said. There are certain functions and roles of the government, having a judicial system and a police force are without a question part of the government. But when we start talking about playing Robin Hood, taking money from other people, other people that are paying through tax dollars, user fees and whatever, and then giving it to somebody else, no matter what the cause, it's just a matter of time before this town is bankrupt. We can't afford just to give money away. And I definitely believe in economic development. I agree with the person's definition of what economic development is, is bringing new wealth to the community. Andrian certainly is an asset to the community. I don't think that anybody is moving to Maryville to go to Andrian, because there are people that are coming from all over the place. It's not just a local Maryville school, it just happens to physically be present here. And it is providing benefit to those that go there that choose to pay the tuition. But it is not a public institution, and we should not just be in a habit of giving our money away to Andrian or any other private institution, even for the parking lot. Yes, we, I believe in our previous meeting, Attorney Steenoff mentioned that there was a problem with another shopping mall on Broadway. We didn't give them money. We just sent code enforcement out there apparently and insisted that they repair the place. Why can't we do the same thing? If you privately own that mall and you have potholes in it that's detrimental to everybody else, ticket them, force them to sell it, or do whatever they have to do so that we can get a responsible landlord in there? And not just say that we've got to be a charity, oh, these people can't afford it, they bought it. Somebody else will buy it, it's a valuable location. So we can't act like Maryville doesn't have something to offer. We're the third-largest land base, soon to be one of the largest populated, we're one of the, what, the second or third-largest population in all of Lake County?
Third-largest.
Yeah, third-largest municipality. We've got a lot going on for us. We don't have to act like, oh, we just can't live without you. If you don't want to be with us, get out.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, come back to the council for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve ordinance 2425 on second reading.
Second.
We have motion from Mr. Pettit with a second by Ms. Hardaway for approval of ordinance 24-25 on second reading. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none. Mr. January, would you call the roll, please?
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
No.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Nay.
Nay.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Four in favor, two against.
Can I vote?
Oh, President Bella.
I vote aye.
Five in favor, two against.
Five to two, the motion carries. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the council payable voucher for approval for June 25th, the AP register summary for ARP purchases for June 25th, and the approval of the town council meeting minutes from June 11th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit with a second by Mrs. Yuzlak for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing committee reports, budget and finance, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. We are in our budgeting season, so we have a lot of meetings coming up, so there'll be more information to come, and that's all.
Very good. Council affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the workshop last night, Mr. Griffin mentioned he has an ordinance. Joe, I believe you and Ricardo are working on some ordinances, so I'd like to call a council affairs committee for Tuesday, July 2nd at 5:00. I know we have a planning commission workshop, Leona and Marge, at 6:30, so that'll give us about an hour and a half to go through the, the ordinances that Joe and Michael have for us.
Okay.
If you could get that notice, Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Street Department, Councilor Yuzlak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I met with the Chapel Hill, with the homeowners meeting, and we have discussed several issues, and Steve King, our street director, was also there with me. So we have discussed different things like the aprons on driveways that have to be repaired, the elevation shots that they have to do, paving, street lights, curbs, and the speed bumps, which did not come in yet. So we are still waiting for the, the bumps, the speed bumps in Ward 4, okay? So that's about the gist of it. Steve had suggested elevation shots where some of the driveways are flooding. So I'm sure he's been involved after the meeting, Steve? Good.
I have.
And the homeowners seem pleased.
Mrs. Yuzlak, if you don't mind, can I ask, there was a section of sidewalk that was also missing there.
Yes.
It's been on a pending to-do list for quite some time, is that?
Right.
Yeah, we talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about that. That's why I mentioned sidewalks.
Okay, great.
They will be put in or repaired wherever.
There's actually two, there's actually two spots. There's another one where it ties into Liberty Estates where the developer didn't take it to the Liberty Estates.
Okay, and then will you update us on the gas tank issue later on in your report?
Yep.
Okay.
And the paving list.
And plus, they have to fix the curbs out there, too. And there's a lot of truck traffic. So I think they wanted another sign, too, am I correct, Steve?
Two signs.
Two signs. We have to get that going out there.
Very good. Anything else?
Okay, thank you. No, that's it for now.
Thank you. Elections, public relations, and town beautification, Vice President Neal.
Thank you, President Bella. Our next meeting for our gateway signs is going to be on July 1st, so we are just working on that project now and just trying to get it done, so we're meeting with the signage company every two weeks, so. And that's really all the updates I have.
Very good, thank you. Environmental affairs, Mr. Pettit.
I will defer to Matt under his department report later.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a motion to move the matter of the Baker-Tilly compensation study to be added to the agenda pursuant to MMC 2-52, 57, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit to add to the agenda this evening the Baker-Tilly proposal, is that correct?
Yes.
And that was in our packets?
Oh.
Yeah. Any discussion on the motion to add it to the agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
Seven in favor. We will add that to the agenda.
I will have Mr. Griffin speak about the Baker-Tilly study.
Thank you, Madam Personnel Chair. Mr. President, Madam Vice President, members of the council, Mr. Clerk Treasurer, you have before you the executive summary from Baker-Tilly. This executive summary is based on describing to you a proposal to conduct a comprehensive compensation study for the town of Merrillville. I've been here now nine months, and I've dealt with a number of matters that involve personnel. It has come repeatedly to my attention that there are concerns about both horizontal equity and vertical equity with regard to compensation and packages for our workforce. One of the complications for Merrillville is that we are the third-largest municipality in Lake County, the 25th largest in the state, and there's not a lot of peers for us. Most communities that have 188 center lane miles, there may be more, but that's according to the inventory from Indot, 36,444 people as of the 2020 census, and 36 square miles often have more than one utility. It's often a utility that, and the law allows us to also draw some of those resources to serve the purposes of the general government as an owner of a utility. We have an excellent utility, the Stormwater Utility, and an excellent executive director of it, but that law prohibits the uses that would allow us to diversify revenue for the general fund. For the, it would be relatively easy for us to participate in Ames' annual survey of salaries if it was just a matter of that, but one of the things that's happened over time here, and it's not happened a very long time for Merrillville, at least 10-plus years, is that we've had what often happens in jobs like the ones we have here. Entry-level jobs are usually offered to people who are not certain about their skill sets. They arrive here and discover, to our happiness, they have a lot more skills than they thought. And their skills increase and their confidence increases, and then they enter a job that might have one title, and they actually end up doing something far more than that job requires, and they do it well. But our compensation can't catch up if we don't evaluate that. The reason to get consultants very often is one of two reasons. Expertise, which we don't have on hand, or organizational capacity. Somebody could do it, but if we had to do it, we would take them off of other things that they need to do. I'm recommending your favor with this, Mr. President and members of the council, because we need this organizational capacity, both for its expertise as well as its ability to provide us organizational capacity that we don't have now, to do something important. I wouldn't recommend this to you if I believed we were gonna do it every year, that would seem frivolous. But we've gone so long without an evaluation, the jobs have become variegated and the responsibilities have become variegated. In fact, later tonight, I hope, the council will take the step of ratifying, on second reading, the amendment to our wage and salary ordinance, just to bring parity in the base pay, base pay now, between the Public Safety Chief of the Police Department and the Public Safety Chief of the Fire Territory. We need this kind of evaluation to help us do a better job with one of our most important resources, which are the people that help us deliver the services that you authorize through appropriations and policy to the people of Merrillville.
Okay.
So I'm recommending this to you. It is bifurcated because we asked for it for purposes that we'll discuss later in future meetings. The total is within our budget, it doesn't require us to do any modifications, and we're prepared to tell you, actually, it's gonna come out of Department 7, which I think is the town administration and town manager department. We do have an effective appropriation, and if you favor this with your vote this evening, I will begin my request for a purchase order of the Office of the Clerk Treasurer tomorrow. Since I have the identifiable funds in an appropriated account, it's a 300 series in Department 7 of the general fund, actually, which is the proper series. And so I'm available for questions if there are further questions about the proposal, or I'll be seated.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Councilor Hardaway, did you have a motion?
Yes, I move that the Baker-Tilly agreement be approved and the proper officers be authorized to execute the agreement with their signatures.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit for approval of the Baker-Tilly proposal to do a comprehensive Town of Merrillville Employee Salary Study. So, questions or comments from the council?
Yes, when will this start?
Mr. Griffin.
Mr. President, with your permission? Thank you, Councilor Yuzlak.
Sure.
One of the questions I said that I would get an answer to, I'm gonna provide now, because I forgot to do it during my presentation, and it's a fair question. If you would wait to take this up in ordinary order, it would delay us to get some of the data that we want right away. Since I advised that I thought that there was a perceived viability to move forward, I started communicating with our consultant this evening, and they've already told us the kind of data that they're gonna be looking for. So it's my belief that upon your approval, I'll let them know tonight, and they will get, they've already been busy on it, they'll get especially busy tomorrow.
Thank you.
And I thank the council for the question.
So, so, Mr. Griffin, are you saying that Mrs. Pettit, who is our HR director, doesn't have the expertise or the time to do this?
Am I being asked, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
May I respond? Mr. January, of course I'm not saying that.
That's what you said earlier.
This, no, actually, you're, you're, you're surmising that from my rec, my recommendation that says when we don't have the kind of expertise.
Mm-hmm.
Or the kind of organizational capacity.
That's what I said.
None of our staff, including our venerable HR director, who does an excellent job, can do classification review and compensation review at the level that we need, based on the age of our town and comparing us to a nearby peer. There is no nearby peer for us here.
So.
So we need some help with that. So some of the questions that we will get asked would be questions that only a firm like this has. I actually went to this firm, because I remember a presentation that I received several years ago from this particular, then she was a partner doing the work, she's now the head of that practice group at Baker-Tilly. When she described what she did, I knew that it was outside the ken of a lot of people. And frankly, I could make phone calls to ask about what other people are paid, but I don't know enough about their job descriptions, nor do I know frankly if their job descriptions accurately depict everything that they do during the course of the day. So this is not a criticism of our HR department. We have one director and an administrative assistant who are very busy doing the work of HR department work for the town of Merrillville already. So they don't have the capacity to do this. So we need this specialization to add to capacity as well as the specialized expertise that would not be ordinarily in any HR department for most medium-to-small-sized municipalities. This would be the kind of thing that corporations have that are Fortune 500 maybe, or maybe some smaller size, but they're not usual or customary. And in my previous billet, I did get around the state a great deal, and I know a few of the places that I think wisely have HR departments, as this town did, none of them would not, would be doing something as comprehensive as this within their workforce. They would actually ask for it to be done outside. So it is not a criticism of the skill sets or the devotion or the capability of our current workforce. This is saying that we've got a special, unique need that only this firm, I believe, is, let me say it differently, that this firm is especially able to address in a way that we need and allow us to continue to do all the other things that we're doing.
It, it just sounds like we should probably have somebody that has the experience in our town to do this type of stuff, so we wouldn't have to pay $52,000.
Well, not this comprehensive. We've been dealing with the salary issue for decades here, so.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
And I, and apologies if I missed this, but I see the fee, which, but how long, I don't know if you said it or not, how long is the term of their services going to be? Is it just for the one-time fee? Is it a 90-day thing? Is it a year? And, and once they give us their recommendation, will it go into effect immediately? Will the town accept it and, and move on it?
No, the town will use the information for sure, and the job, it's based on just the job, getting it finished.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Yuzlak, sure.
Are they going to interview each department head?
I'm not sure of the entire process.
Okay, that's why I'm asking. Will they, Michael? Mr. President?
With your permission?
Yes.
I want to answer.
Thank you.
Question of counselor, she, I beg your pardon, I don't, I feel so uncomfortable saying that in a public setting like this.
It's okay.
I'm respectful of your office. She likes to be addressed that way. There is in your packet the value for the fees. They ordinarily break this down with a single fee that they expect to be done at the end of their service. So as long as it's gonna take, we have 175 full-time workers here, so they're gonna go through that. What I do know for both of you is that they intend to do a survey, in addition to getting the data that we're going to give them, they intend to survey every worker to complete on their own, within a time limit, a survey of what they say they do. They want to know what the job says it is, and they actually want to have what they actually do during the course of a week or a day. And that will be used, and they're gonna try to do what they call an alignment study, which takes a look at job description there, and what they say they're actually doing. And remember, this is usually what they call, in my opinion, the, the bigger value for us is the classification review, because that's where we're talking about, have we put people in the right billet spots in terms of our hierarchy here? And we, I think that we need the help of someone with this kind of expertise. So as you can see, they broke it into two sets, because we were concerned about being able to get compensation data to help inform the budget process, and we wanted to get that as quickly as possible. So that's why they bifurcated this proposal to us. Ordinarily, it's not, the, the flat fee that they gave you would be then billed as progress payments are made, according to meeting each of these metrics that they've described to you.
Thank you.
Will they also tell us?
Is that responsive to you? I beg your pardon, is that responsive to you, Councilor Yuzlak, as well?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you both. Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Griffin, will they all also tell us whether or not the people that are in the certain positions are qualified to be in those positions?
Yeah, I don't think they would have that data. I don't understand that.
Because how can we compare apples to apples unless we look at people's qualifications to be in their respective positions?
Mr. President, with your permission?
Mr. Griffin.
Thank you. We've asked for this to be comprehensive. I've read this carefully. I think that they're gonna give deference to us for our selections, but there'll be a meeting with the executive leadership, the policy leadership, because they're gonna have to execute or implement whatever the findings are. So I suspect that that will be the kind of data that they will collect, and that they'll be willing in a limited way to share with policy leadership as they collect it. They may not talk about the incumbents' qualifications, they may talk about the general qualifications and pay for the job that's similarly situated with similar responsibilities and people who hold it, but beyond qualifications, those decisions get made by the policy leadership here. I hope that the town managers before me have given recommendation advice through the Personnel and Employee Benefit Committee, and they've made recommendations for hires on the basis of your job descriptions that actually start to describe the qualifications that the town seeks for these positions. They may give us advice about how to make them improved or refined, or they may affirm what we're doing. So I don't know how I can answer directly your question, except to say, I do believe they'll collect enough data, and they'll be very pleased to share that with the policy leadership to help inform them as they decide how they're gonna implement their recommendations.
Thank you.
One more question.
Mrs. Yuzlak.
Please. Michael, will they discuss the salaries of each department head? And you said they're going to interview each worker, correct? Each employee?
Mr. President, with your permission?
Please.
Thank you. Madam Councilwoman, if I said they're gonna interview each employee, I hope I didn't communicate that. That would be an error on my part. They are gonna survey each employee.
Okay.
They're gonna get them to respond with this questionnaire.
Okay, that's.
They will take samples of employees, but the goal is to, the first thing is about compensation review. So they're gonna look at wages, they're gonna look at benefits, they're gonna look at how much we contribute to them, how much we make workers contribute to them. They'll look at retirement, but that's largely out of our hands, that's set by state law, we can participate in it or not, but that's basically it. But, so to answer your question, yes, they will be about salaries and much more. And in terms of the other question, I believe that they're gonna give us so much data, we're gonna, I hope we're not overwhelmed. It'll be our job to make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
I think, I hope I'm being responsive to your question.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you did.
Anything else from the council?
Call for the vote, Mr. President.
Mr. January, would you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Yuzlak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor?
Seven in favor, the motion carries. Mr. Griffin?
I thank the council. I'll take the steps to notify the vendor. Thank you.
Councilor Hardaway, anything else from your committee?
Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Public safety, Ms. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have a public safety meeting with the fire marshal, the chief of police, and chief Yerga. We do have some ordinances that will be, that need revision, so they will be done by Attorney Sweattloff and partner. So more to come on that. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Economic development, Mr. Pettit?
No report, Mr. President.
Moving on to public safety, Ms. Hardaway.
I just did that.
Oh, sorry, I just did that. Economic development, Parks, Recreation, and Community Center, Mr. Pettit?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a committee meeting scheduled for 5:00 on Thursday at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Mr. Griffin and I are preparing the agenda, and we're gonna talk with staff, Lisa, make sure everyone's there that needs to be there, okay?
Mr. Pettit, can you add to your discussion agenda, the subject of the splash pad for the community center?
Certainly.
I have to agree that that would be a fun thing, I've seen other communities have them, and it's something we should look at.
Okay, I have some comments, Mr. President.
Mrs. Yuzlak, please.
Okay, thank you. The local parks. Matt Lake, please. I talked to, or had a call from Mrs. Johnson, she lives next door to the Crescent Lake Park. There are an abundance of weeds surrounding that park. You did a very good job with mowing down all of the excess, whatever was there, and cleaning it up, but she wants to know if those weeds could be removed.
A lot of that in there is fragmities, they have been sprayed, it's an ongoing challenge with that. So mowing is really the best alternative for us at this time to keep them in check.
You think you could mow that down, then, huh?
Yes, it's been very wet.
Because she said, when it rains, it's all muddy in there.
Yeah, it's been, we actually got the marsh master stuck back there, that's how mucky it is back there.
Oh, good.
We do intend to do a little bit of drainage improvement, we got a new ditcher for the marsh master, so we're gonna ditch out that area so it drains better. Problem is, it's flat at the bottom, and it drains very slowly, and so that gets, becomes more of a challenge. We've got Creekside in there doing mowing, and then we go in with the marsh master and get the harder stuff that they can't get.
Yes.
But I think if we ditch it out nice this summer, we'll be able to get more of that mowed, and the conditions will be better, so that we don't end up getting stuck with a marsh master, which is hard to do.
Now, I did make a comment at one of the previous meetings about the park on 73rd Avenue, Independence Hill. Now, it is mowed, it looks good, but the main question from residents, young boys who go there and fish, it's got weeds all the way around where that pond or lake is. I don't know if that's man-made or what. Have you looked at that?
Is that a township park?
Yes, that's a township.
I have not looked at that, because, I have not looked at that, because it's a township park, it's not a town park.
Oh, okay, so you have nothing to do with those weeds?
No, not at all. It's all owned by the township.
Because the people that have questioned me after the last meeting, they said that they were more concerned with the weeds. And the park is mowed, I did check.
I think that was an old shooting range at one point in time.
Pardon?
If I'm not mistaken, that was an old shooting range at one point in time.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so.
Trap shoot, they called it, at one time.
Yeah, but it's not owned by the town, so we haven't done anything.
Oh, okay. And I have to thank you for getting Mr. Rodriguez to move the construction equipment off of the Jennings Street Park, used to be a park. He bought that, he will be building on it. He got his permit like four years ago and has done nothing, left that equipment there, but he finally moved it with the help from you and Sheila, with calling him. So when they are going to start building, I really don't know. It's been four years, but we got the equipment out of there. But thank you for that, too.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, Rick.
Anything else, Mr. Pettit?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
No, I'm sorry, sir, we don't do that during our reports. You can stay till after the meeting and make a comment. Moving on to utility liaison, Mr. Leonard Chandler Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. The liaison committee met on the 12th, actually, not the committee, just Mr. Griffin and I, met at a luncheon on the 12th of June, and with NIPSCO's new president, and we got a chance to speak with Alexias Barber, who would be getting us in contact with some other representatives of NIPSCO. And hopefully, we will have a meeting on the 18th of July. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to special committees, abandoned and blighted properties, Ms. Hayes Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. Myself, Mr. Griffin, and Ricardo?
Mr. Hall.
Ricardo Hall and Mr. G.
Attorney Hall.
Attorney Hall, thank you.
Yes, and our administrative hearing officer, Geekus.
Yes, we all met last week and discussed some things moving forward to get our committee up and going. Mr. Griffin, if you would be so kind to sum that up as to what we talked about?
Madam Councilwoman, it'd be my pleasure.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad that you were there. We had a very good and illuminating discussion about the process of the hearing. Because of amendments that the council has made, there was some uneasiness about the responsibilities or the new ways that we're supposed to execute the parts of 3616, which allows us to do an enforcement action by telling you to clean something up on your lot, and if we have to do that for you, being able to do that ourselves and bill you for it, and having it attached to your taxes. We talked about that process, mostly we talked about the unsafe premises and building law that we've adopted in its entirety here, and that process. I got a better sense about how that's done, and now I have a better sense about how it's going to be staffed. So part of this has to do with a very longtime and very able and beloved member of our staff, our chief code enforcement officer has recently resigned, retired is the better word, I think. And because of that, a good deal of institutional knowledge went with her. So now that I'm aware of that and what that was, it will be my task to bring them, the people that are parties to that enforcement process, all up to speed, renew and review with everyone what their role is in the process, and I think that we should be back in order. I today received orders that need to be posted within 10 days of the next hearing. They're gonna have standing hearings for the time being, on the third Friday, I believe, of every month.
Yes.
So July 19th, I believe, is our next meeting. I will be attending those meetings as well to help comfort the people or assuage the anxiety of the new roles that some of them may have. But I know you in terms of that enforcement, and as you know, Madam Chair, the statute requires that you've adopted in its entirety by the town code, that town managers are required to enforce all the ordinances that are passed by the town council. So I'm gonna assist with that for the time being. Don't expect me to knock on a door and cite you or any of that sort of thing, but I am gonna try to equip the people who are usually doing that to help them out, even go with them. So I'll be posting the notices for the few that we have for this upcoming hearing.
Yes.
And other than that, I did talk to Ms. Shine today and her staff, they were very gracious to do the mailing, so we're gonna do certified mailing to everyone except the one that had a dismissal, we're just happy to get them the mail, we don't need proof that it happened. And then we will take the other steps of affidavits attached to every one of the notices that we're gonna post conspicuously, as advised by Mr. Hall, and I'll, again, be idiot to those, for the near term, I'm gonna try to attend every one of those hearings. Did I meet, was I responsive to your question, Madam?
Absolutely, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, Mr. President.
Why don't you keep the floor and talk to us about your semi-quintcentennial committee?
Getting better by the months, Mr. President, with that pronunciation. For the semi-quintcentennial committee, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Special Town Project, Vice President Neal?
Thank you, President Bella. We have concluded with our Juneteenth celebration that we had, it was a success, a little windy out, but we made it through. We have not finalized everything on that, because we've been quickly moving with 4th of July activities that are going on. So July 3rd are gonna be the fireworks at the Maryville High School parking lot, at sundown. July 4th, our parade, we have, have an overwhelming number of participants, we're up to 63, I think last year we had 41. So we have a lot of participants for the parade this year. We're gonna start getting everything staged around 10:00 a.m., the parade will start at 11:00 a.m. at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and going south on Broadway. We've revised a few rules and regulations, so participants will have that. We have a new voting system this year to allow the residents to vote on the best float this year.
Oh, wow.
So they'll be able to use QR codes, and we have other methods, so they can vote, and they'll be given a time to get their voting done through the weekend, actually. So it's gonna be a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but we wanted to get more community involvement with that. And then with that being said, I had spoken with Chaz, and he's gonna give me some update reports on how our social media pages have greatly increased how the number, he's been able to find out the number of shares, the number of views. So if we have an activity and we don't get a lot of people, they see the information, and so that's what's more important, we can say that they are getting the information. So I'll give a report on that in the next meeting with those, with that data and statistics. And we have a meeting on tomorrow, I believe, it is Wednesday. I'm meeting with a group for our Maryville's First Bike Club.
Oh.
So we're gonna get a Maryville's First Bike Club started. And that's all.
Is there any update on the entrance signs, the welcome to Maryville signs?
Yes, we're meeting with them on July 1st, on Monday, for the gateway signs.
Oh, great.
Yes, we're meeting with them on Monday to go, we have, we have the design, we're just finalizing the design, gonna get figures and costs, but we're moving pretty steadily with it. We have a steady meeting every two weeks on the calendar, until we're, until they're done.
Is that sign put in the same spot?
They are gonna replace the old signs, and then I believe we're gonna have new signs that are gonna be in the, I'm gonna call them a roundabout, they're not roundabouts, what are they called? Coming off the expressway, we'll have some.
Overleafs.
A few.
Overleafs.
Yes, we'll have signs there also.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, in the parks also.
The parks, too?
Yes, so we're looking for new signs.
Each park?
Yes.
And it will state the?
Yes, go ahead.
It will have each councilperson name on it, so they'll know what, who their councilperson is in that park area.
Sign in the park.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we have done that years ago, Rick.
And they'll be removable, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it won't, the, our, the names of the council, the councillors, they'll be removable, so if a new councillor comes in, it can be easily replaced.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Department and Commission Reports, Lake County Solid Waste Management District, Mrs. Neal?
Yes, so the next meeting is July 11th at 6:30. They have the next household hazard waste collection on July 7th, on July 7th, and it's gonna be at the Highland Public Works, 800 Kennedy Avenue, and it's from 9:00 to 2:00 p.m. They do have a list of do's and don'ts, so you can look that up on the Lake County Solid Waste website. They still have a little compost left, so if anybody's still interested in doing any gardening or yard work and they need compost, you can get a half cubic yard free, as long as you're a Lake County resident with your ID, and you can reach them at 219-337-8341. And they'll just give you a time that you can come out and pick it up, and you have to bring your own buckets.
Thank you. Ms. Hardaway, what's going on at NERC these days?
They do not have a meeting until September, so I will know then, thank you.
Okay. Stormwater Management Resources, our director is Mr. Matt Lake.
Thank you. Real quick, had a meeting with VS Engineering recently to QA QC, the Hendrick Street Drainage Improvement Project. We believe we got enough details to get them to 100% complete soon. They'll provide some engineer's estimates, and then I think we can get that out to bid this summer. Independence Health Third Edition, we have a draft set of plans, we're gonna QC that this Friday with Robinson Engineering, and so that's gonna be a massive project, so we'll be seeking some federal dollars to help with the construction of that, and apply accordingly to maximize what we can get for cost share. I also met with Christopher Burke Engineering, we're looking at 56 and Grant, the Regional Detention Project, this is gonna be a massive project, that's all set to go. We've got a commitment from Little Cal for a million dollars towards this project, and so I wanna get that out to bid late summer, early fall this year. The town orchards, all the trees are planted at both Rosenbaum and Prusen Center, trees look great, we lost a couple, there is a caveat for replacement. The Student Conservation Association will be taking care of those trees for the season, we got the signage up, and so, again, this'll be free apples for anybody visiting the park once they mature out. We already got apples on some of the trees, so it's exciting to see that, even in the first planting season, we're starting to apples on these trees. And our detention pond fee study is complete, we're gonna present it to our board at our August meeting, and then it'll go to the council for their review and decision. And that's all I have.
Mr. President?
Mr. Pettit?
Matt, I noticed he stepped out, and I drove by there on the north side of Pierce today, 69th. We've got a lot of pipe in there, probably for the project, correct?
Yeah.
But it also looks like there's a lot of fence posts that were taken out?
Everything.
Is that what I'm seeing?
Everything will be replaced, if there's any fencing, that's removed.
All right.
It'll be replaced in kind with new, I think a lot of stuff was told to even, you know, put back, so it'll be replaced.
All right, if you could, after the meeting, if you could get with Mike, he's coming back in the chambers, but I'm sure he's concerned about that, so.
Yeah, I'll get with him on that.
Get with him on that, and let him know when the project's gonna start.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem. Thanks.
Matt, how many total trees are, have been planted, do you know?
279.
Okay, that's great. Moving on to the Fire Territory Board, Mrs. Neal and Ms. Hardaway.
There will be a meeting on Thursday, correct, Chief?
Yes.
That's it? Mr. January?
Yes. So the Treasurer's Office, I've got a terrific staff that is away on vacation, not vacation, but they're actually for, at the State Board of Accounts, getting some training, just in terms of the town's finances collectively, between stormwater, redevelopment, and all of the organizations associated with the town, we have over $27,248,000 in the account. And at this time, I'd like to defer, just so that my attorney can address the audience.
Good evening, everybody.
If you're gonna address, could you please go to the podium, sir?
Attorney Lloyd Mullins.
State your name and address for the record, too.
My name is Lloyd Mullins, I'm an attorney in Cromwell, Indiana, here at the behest clerk treasurer, January, trying to get this straightened out during the May meeting, where his rights were unlawfully denied when he wasn't allowed to cast the tiebreaker vote. I would urge council members to remedy that with Mr. January, it would save them quite a lot of money. If that doesn't happen, then I'll have to bring suit against the town and, or this ultra-virus action. Last time I had to do this was the Maryville EMS, I don't know if all of you were, or at least some of you were part of that. Maryville, for whatever reason, I said, look, you gotta pay these EMS workers for overtime, wrote them a letter, say you owe them that, pay them. The town didn't do that and ignored my letter, wrote them another one. Town ignored it, wrote them a letter, about $45,000, and, you know, some couple thousand dollars in attorney's fees at the time. dollars in attorney's fees at the time. Well, instead of just, you know, paying them and taking care of it, the town of Maryville decided to fight it, we go to federal court. Finally, after getting no answers, they offered me $32,000, well, the lost wages were forty-some thousand dollars. Go to trial, 'cause it's a ridiculous offer, get everything that I asked for, $49,000, something like that, get it doubled, because it proved it was intentional and knowing. So that was almost $100,000 and another $83,000 in attorney's fees. Just saying to you, don't ignore me, let's fix this right now and save yourself a lot of money by taking care of the Clerk Treasurer and doing what he was supposed to do, that is cast the deciding vote on that motion. I would urge you guys to get rid of me and not spend any money on my behalf, or instead of fighting this, losing in court and having to pay not only yourself, not only my fees, but the attorneys that you will have to engage to defend the lawsuits. So overall, it's a very economic move for you guys just to do this the way it was supposed to be. I read the newspaper articles, unfortunately, it's wrong, you guys did not have the right not to have Mr. January cast the deciding vote.
That's your opinion?
I'm pretty sure I'm right, and I'm willing to bet on it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Mr. King, Street Department?
Hey, where do I begin? Speedhumps, speedhumps are going in through the town slowly but surely. Unfortunately, the contractors understaffed, like, like everybody else is, they're, they're working diligently on those. Hendrick Street Railroad Crossing Project, CN has completed, the tracks ride wonderfully for the first time in not a lot of how many years. Our 61st Avenue Road Project, that's, that was completed yesterday, I believe they got done. It looks really good, it turned out really nice. So that, so that's done. Also, we've, our, our Street Department, we've been doing some asphalt patching jobs, hopefully we'll get them wrapped up this week. Next week, we're gonna start doing concrete work, some sidewalk work, all over town. We've also been busy maintaining and watering the planters, picking up trash. Again, trash is, is a battle we fight every day. The signs, We Buy Houses signs, the Foster Parents signs that are coming out now. Last week, we picked up 270 signs that were placed in our right-of-way. So this is a, this is a daily battle along with the trash, and, and we're doing the best we can. As far as the fuel tanks, the fuel tanks are gonna start coming out tomorrow. This is a town-wide issue, we've talked to the council about this before. A diesel tank has failed from the inside, causing, causing that whole system to fail. These, these tanks have a 20- to 30-year life expectancy, they've been in the ground 50 years. So they're, they're coming out starting tomorrow. IDAM is involved, they'll monitor this every step of the way. And I think that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Steve. Parks and Recreation, Lisa Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. President, sorry, I have a cold, so it's gonna be a little hard. The Dana Evans Camp was today, it was a success, we had over 120 camp, small children, adults, everybody in there, they had a blast. Dana Evans visited with quite a few people, took several pictures. There's her shirt. One major thing that I would like to talk about is, we've been having some issues at Steffick Park with garbage cans being set on fire. We've had to replace them twice, so I'm going to find out why our cameras are not picking them up, or the person that's doing it up. So I got a call into the camera company to find out how we can remedy that, because we, we need to put a stop to that as far as the garbage cans being let on fire, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Chief.
Please, Mr. President. Did you receive any money from the food and beverage tax? Because our money from the food and beverage tax is earmarked for Parks and Recreation. Has anything come to you yet?
As far as, like, a check, why? I mean, no, I have not received anything yet.
How do we distribute that, Mr. January?
We have the money that's in the account, we haven't used it for anything yet.
Okay.
Oh, you have not distributed?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but you are going to distribute to the Parks and Recreation?
At the council's discretion.
Yeah, we haven't talked about that yet.
Oh, okay. When do you think we'll be talking about that, Mr. President?
We have an amount that we can actually use, yeah.
Yeah, because we have a good amount. Would you state that amount again, please, for the public?
That particular amount, I wanna say it's about $268,000, I don't have it, well, I have it right here. It's, no, it's probably not on this report, it's, but it's about $268,000, somewhere.
Okay, well, then we could probably prepare to.
Mr. President, if I had your leave, I am reliably advised that there's $165,000, $63.17 as of June 20th, that would not be something, in fairness to the Clerk Treasurer, that would not be something he would have handy, and he would wanna report basically at the time that they clear the account as of the end of the month. But for this purpose, I'm sharing that, 'cause it's just information to inform. That fund was created to be a receipt fund, so my recommendation was going to be let it accumulate, we'll report it to you regularly, but it will be the council that has to decide how to allocate that and how to use that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Griffin.
My pleasure, thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. Police Department, Chief Neuses.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as of about 5 o'clock this afternoon, we've had a little bit over 2,000 calls for service to the police department. Where the, we're not, the month's not completed yet, we've had approximately 460 traffic stops, approximately 20 arrests. These are the numbers, they're not completed yet because we don't get a complete count till the end of the month, so that's a more accurate description. You're gonna start seeing more, if you haven't seen them already, the motorcycles will be out patrolling some of the subdivisions. We're gonna have the ATVs and UTVs out on some of the bike trails, because those are not very easy to get through with vehicles, so we'll be having the, our ATVs and UTVs out there. And what we're gonna be doing is, we're gonna be splitting it up when we have enough people on the shift to actually do something proactive. We'll be splitting up in smaller increments, two to three hours, that way we're not draining on the overtime. So anticipate seeing them. The other thing I wanted to mention, it was a couple meetings ago, I brought up the Lake County Task Force team that we had joined and we had an arrest, where actually they had a raid in Maryville a few weeks back, maybe it was a couple of months back, actually. I just wanted to report that we've been successful again. They were able to raid a home in Gary where a subject was actually supplying and transporting illegal narcotics into Maryville. So that's a win for us. It's one of those things, again, that shows what can happen when you have extra manpower to do things, and I'm very proud of Officer Osborne for participating in this. We're gonna continue with our review of operations, we're about the six-month mark right now. What we do with these operations are, we determine, are they working? Is there anything new that we are looking at? And I give some, I give a little bit of an, an example here, we're starting to see a spike of homeless people coming through town, and that is something that I feel is, could potentially be a problem for us. So we're gonna look at that, we're gonna look if there's anything that we have to change. If we do have to change, we're gonna get on it, and this is part of our project to maintain and cur, or maintain peace and curb any type of violent crimes, which we've been pretty successful at doing so far. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances, we do have second reading ordinances, ordinance 24-22. It's an ordinance of the town of Maryville, providing that zoning ordinance be amended, changing the established C3 Highway Commercial Zoning District Classification to a Planned Unit Development Zoning District Classification. Everybody does it, don't worry. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Arnie Macy is with me tonight, Jan Macy's in the backpack there, and Andrew Macy, so it's kind of a family affair, Macy Storage. Basically, the reason I wanted to bring the picture tonight is because I wanted you to see what's gonna be on Mississippi Street in an area, this is gonna be a first-class project, and it's gonna be in an area that really hasn't had any development on the Maryville side for probably 30 years. So I think it's important, it's gonna increase property taxes, 'cause there's no tax abatement here, so those taxes will come to the town, so I think it's a good project. And we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Can we discuss the location again, please?
Yes.
Excuse me, Richard?
It's off of Mississippi Street. If you go to 61st, the Old Mississippi comes down in dead ends. This project, because of the work with the Plan Commission, they didn't want it to come out on Marcella or the New Mississippi, so it comes out on the Old Mississippi, which ends right at this project, and actually.
62nd, isn't it, Rich, or 63rd?
It's 63rd.
63rd Avenue, Mr. President.
Yeah, but it, but I mean, it comes off of 61st as the entrance into this project. And then it, it actually comes right into where the office is here.
So that's north of Menards?
Yes.
Hardaway?
And if you look at the first picture, Menards is in the background.
I see.
Yeah, yeah. Where is the Cracker Barrel?
Cracker Barrel would be just to the north of this. Actually, that will clean up the, it's pretty rough where the pond is, next to the Cracker Barrel, where all the employees park, that's all gonna be cleaned up, too. So this project's gonna kinda clean up that whole area, and it's gonna provide some more.
And you have climate control in there, too, right?
54% will be climate controlled.
That's great, and an office, which is good.
And there are security cameras, so I mean, it'll, it'll be good for the whole area.
How much of a staff do you have in the office?
Two.
Two?
Yeah.
And they're there all day?
Yeah, one will be there all the time, and one will be part-time.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mr. President, I make, oh, go ahead.
I apologize.
Let's get a motion on the floor, if you don't mind.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 24-22.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Pettit, who did the second?
You both did.
Mrs. Usek, thank you.
Thank you.
With discussion.
With discussion.
That's all I was gonna ask, if there was, if we were gonna have a motion to discuss.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
I believe there'll be a roundabout coming in over there on Mississippi Street, too, am I correct?
That's up at 61st, they're actually.
Oh, 61st.
Yes, they're working on it now.
Yes.
I think that's part of the Hobart project.
Right.
Can we hear from your client, Mr. Anderson?
Pardon me?
Can we hear from your client, please?
Yes. Yes, we have been working on this for many months with your staff, and it's gone very well. Different cities, do it different ways. We had several workshops with them, we've worked through all the issues. One, and we've even to the point, we've obtained a drainage permit. To give you a little bit about my background, our background, I've been in storage business for 30 years, and as we've, the storage business has evolved, we have created very appealing exteriors to our storage units. And you can see coming along Mississippi there, after you pass Menards. I've visited this site several times, walked the site as much as I could, and I believe that one real advantage to this property will be for the employees of Menards and the employees of Cracker Barrel. We will have approximately 30 to 35 cameras around our properties, and high, high security. So I think Cracker Barrel employee, or an employee of Menards, when they're walking to their cars at night, will feel much more secure. We also plan to be active in helping from there north up to the McDonald's to continually improve that area. I know Mike Anderson Chevrolet is very active, and, and a very good dealership, so we're hoping that this will seed that area. And also, a part of our employee, our, our customer base will be from Hobart, they'll be coming in there, so I guess I would say, let's get some Hobart money and pay some Maryville taxes. So, anyway, we're, we're a family business, and we, we very much hope that we're part of this community, and, and we will do what we can to help the community if we get the opportunity. So it's an appealing, attractive storage facility, it's high-end, we've done lots of studies and feasibility, and feel like that we're on top of this, so we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So is this the area where the semis park?
No, this right now is an overgrown area.
Wooded area?
Just to the north of Menard.
Behind the Taco Bell and Arby's? I'm just trying to.
No, it's between the Cracker Barrel and the, I actually have a drawing. Yeah, the Cracker Barrel and the Cracker Barrel, if you're in a, if you're in a Menards parking lot, it's the entire north of the parking lot, it just goes north, all that wooded area there.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Macy, what's the total investment of the project?
The total investment, including land, will be in the eight and a half million.
Okay.
Which I want to add, it was approved by the Plan Commission, too.
Yes.
With several workshops, so I think we looked over it quite thoroughly. And I believe it's a good project.
Any other discussion from the council? Is there any public comment on this petitioner?
Two questions. One, the town of Maryville currently has an ordinance against having a camper in my driveway, this pertains to this, because I'm gonna guess that one of the businesses he has is storage for campers. My question is, why can't I legally park a legally licensed vehicle or trailer on my property year-round? Second point, I asked the prior time I got up here, do you have an ethics policy that requires you to disclose any personal conflicts of interest? Such as, if any of you do business with him in your other work? I have no objection to this particular policy or project. I do have an objection to the idea that I can't park my camper in my driveway, and that's part of his business model, is to get my camper in his parking lot at $50 or $100 a month.
Well, it's not public comment.
It's not a public question, it's public comment.
No, it's, it's a comment on the approval of additional storage unit that is partially required or partially put in business because of the town's ordinance on having campers in driveways.
Is there any other public comment?
I'll say something about the ethics, I would like to know the answer to that question. Do you have an ethics policy?
This business is gonna sit in a TIF zone?
What? I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry.
We didn't hear you.
Is the business going to sit in a TIF zone?
Yes, it is.
And the property taxes will go to the?
Hundred percent to the town of Maryville, Brian.
To the, no, TIF, TIF zone money is paid to the RDC, that's why the RDC has $9.1 million.
Well, it'll go to the, yes, it'll go in the allocation area.
Thank you, thank you. The RDC, not the town, it's different.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, the only thing I wanted to respond to is, is there's no outdoor storage.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I know, I just wanted to clarify that there isn't any.
Seeing no other public comment, back to the council. Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Usek?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor, motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Macy.
Thank you.
Welcome down.
Mr. Macy.
Moving on tonight to also second reading, ordinance 24-23. It's an ordinance to amend the Wage and Salary Ordinance Number 24-02, establishing the wage and salary rates for elected officials, non-elected officials, town employees, et cetera. Mr. Griffin, would you mind giving us a little preference of this and what we're doing?
Mr. President, it'd be my pleasure. The title is the title that we have referred to every one of our Wage and Salary Ordinances. It has been your practice to make amendments into the existing document, but then bring forward everything else instead of standalone ordinances that would be added to a base ordinance. The purpose of this ordinance is The purpose of this ordinance is actually to take steps to bring parity between the police chief and the assistant chief and the fire chief and the deputy chief. To the base pay, I should add, because our compensations are a little bit different, partly due to resources and history. But this will, if you adopt it this evening, bring the base pays and make them equal. And we were able to locate a way to pay for this within the existing budget as well. And this will be retroactive to December 31st, which is the start of the pay period for the current calendar year. Being sympathetic with having to do catch-up, our expectation is that the language in the ordinance actually recognizes the clerk treasurer having a reasonable amount of time to be able to go back to compensate for the past wage and salaries that were not at the level that will be adopted this evening if you so elect to do that. But our expectation is, is that prospectively, those will be made at the rate that you would be adopting this evening bi-weekly and that the clerk treasurer, within a reasonable time, will take steps to make up the retroactivity back through the pay period beginning December 31st of 2023. This is what we would call a vertical equity measure, where we compare people of similar positions within our departments and try to bring some equity. It was timely because our police chief, he doesn't like me to talk about this, but I like him a lot. He's very good at his job. I love that he says all the time to me, "I just want to catch bad guys." I love that about him. But he also just graduated the school that's required under Indiana law for all chiefs to attend. He's been on the waiting list for a very long time because the seats are minimal, but the needs are great. He finally got through that. So it did remind me that we need to take this step. We took some steps, Trista Hudson and I, to locate where we felt that this would be a sustainable source. And so we recommend your favor in adoption of this ordinance this evening. I do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Please, Mr. President.
Let's do a motion on the floor and then we can open up for discussion.
Still moved, Ms. President.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Pettit. Seconded by... You guys sound alike to me.
I'll try to change that.
Okay. Open for discussion, Mrs. Uslak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask you, Mr. Griffin, we're talking about wages and salaries of elected officers, employers, and et cetera, et cetera. Does that include the town council as elected officials?
Yeah, Madam... Mr. President, with your permission?
Sure.
Counselor Uslak, yes. You do tend to fix the same rate. You have not changed, as far as I've looked back, I've not seen any changes in 10 years. It could go back further.
Twenty-one years, Michael.
Okay, then, I'm corrected. Okay, yes. So the wage and salary ordinance you've adopted, at least in my experience and my recent history of looking back, has been at least 10 years and now I've learned 21 years. But you re-fix it each year as you adopt the wage and salary ordinance for all the officers and employees of the town, which 36-5-3-2 requires. So I'm showing off, actually, when I do that.
Okay.
And this doesn't propose to make any changes. We certainly were... As your employee, I will be happy to take the research necessary to try to find a way to be sustainable. It is the council's pleasure to revisit that in this next budget cycle or beforehand. But I knew that I would be tasked... It was my initiative that was concerned about this. I had a conversation with the council president, and he felt that it was a good move. So after consulting with Ms. Hudson, we felt we found a location that was sustainable. You took steps to take the first step at prior meetings. We made the appropriation transfer. So my hope is that you will favor this. And if you're interested in increases for the council, I'll certainly do my best to find the resources to make that sustainable, too. But it is ultimately a policy of the council.
Well, thank you, Mr. Griffin.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Open to the public. Any public comment on this wage adjustment?
I have a question for Mr. Griffin. If you could find the wage disparity between these two positions, why can't you figure out the wage disparity for everybody else? Why do we have to hire someone else to do that?
Mr. Griffin, if you'd like to address it.
Mr. President, thank you, with your permission. Thank you, Mr. Messarch. How am I doing? Did I do that right? I'm trying very hard. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Because I have limited capacity personally and I don't have the expertise. In my opinion, the step that we took tonight is only about internal equity. It's not about horizontal equity, which we don't have the organizational capacity or the expertise to try to ascertain. And I think the council president said at a prior meeting that we regarded this as a first step. We think there are other equities to consider. We just felt that this was a step that we wanted to do because it was a significant disparity between he and the Public Safety Leader of the Fire Department. And although they have a different set of resources for that, I could identify, as I'm looking at differences that I've noticed in similar positions, but I don't have the capacity personally or the expertise to be able to make the kind of judgments that I expect that we're going to be able to get from Baker-Tilly. But thank you for thinking enough of me to think I might. I appreciate that very much.
You're very welcome. Just to double-check, we're doubling their salary, correct?
No.
Can we double their salary? I think we have... All right. They deserve it.
Mr. President, with your permission?
Mr. Griffin?
It would be my desire that we could pay everybody what they deserve. And even more than that, we have laws of the state of Indiana. We have limited resources that only grow by the growth quotient of 4% by a recent action of the state on the part of the property taxes that we use in a general fund, which is a source that we have. So it is one of the challenges that we'll have after our study is that we're going to have to look hard about the resources we have and how we'll allocate them. And the event, as I expect, they'll come back and feel similarly to Mr. Messarch about the value that we get from our leadership. And I thank the council.
Hi, question.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Shonda Flowers, 6137 Connecticut Street.
Thank you.
Anything else? No, that's just it. So my question is, I first want me to just come in. I appreciate that the chiefs, both, and their assistant chief of police, they are quite deserving of it. And none of us, from a department head perspective, can even measure up to the amount of people that fall underneath their tenure. So I'm excited that you guys finally got probably a pinch of or even deserved more. So I want to say that. My question is, is that what is the parameters that are used? Because when you look just in doing an average myself with the department heads, which includes myself and the other lowest-paid department head, the average for what the department heads make are $75,639.25. Prior to their increase, they were above that average. Not saying that they don't deserve more, because they absolutely do. So what I'm trying to figure out is how do we, once we are midway through a year, that has already been a budgeted amount, then determine midway through the year to give or make the corrections to bring their salaries up while not considering the other department heads, like myself, who is at $55,128? And then the other department head, who is at 50... I think she's probably at $50,000. And we, in comparison to some of our other counterparts, have more of the responsibilities. I get that my department is on the cutting board, so there's no interest in trying to do. But when you talk about the statement of inclusion and respect and being fair to everyone, who is the person that represents a department that most of the council wants to get rid of? Where is it for someone like myself when it comes to feeling that there's no equity, there's no fairness? Not to mention, our departments didn't even get the 3% last year or this past year. But we received the bonuses in lieu of two years during the time that we have filed for this lawsuit. So who is advocating for the non-attractive department? Who is saying, hey, all employees got a 3%? Some folks got 4, a little bit more. But equally, all full-time employees, from my understanding, were supposed to get a 3%. My department didn't get that last year or the year before. And let alone being the lowest paid. Who... Is there anyone that's advocating to just do what's right while we're still here? I know that the future looks grim. But while we're here, is that a conversation that is coming up? And what are the protocols that you're using to measure who deserves, in the middle of a year, to get that increase that's backdated? As well as, no disrespect, but the last two weeks I was still here trying to get $900 for that longevity that everyone else was paid for and getting that response. And $900 probably is not a whole lot of money. But when you're only making $55,000 and everything else is going up, I already know the answer, which is no. Because if you were going to give me the money, you would have given it to me. But is there anyone that's allocating for just simply doing what is right, which includes the people that you're trying to fire? That's exactly why our pay looks the way that it does. No one is doing what's right. And you, I live here. And Sean Pettit, I ran against you and I lost graciously. But you are still my elected official. Do what's right by your employees. You wonder why you can't get people hired in? I'm going to be honest, and I'm going to say, when it comes to what I feel I need to do, which is go to EEOC, that's because internally, I don't feel like I have anyone here that is going to bet for simply what's right.
Your silence speaks.
Very good points.
It's hard coming behind that. Darian Collins, 2505. The firm and all of the studies and the things that we do, are they Maryville residents? Mr. Griffin, because I know someone who is a Maryville resident who was a great consultant with Mercer, who can assist with that study, Dr. Linda Gunn. She's credentialed. She can... She's done similar studies for Anthem, Indiana, for the state. We... I want to see where we are incorporating resources and people and expertise here in Maryville. Are we... It's always about who you know. I mean, I understand that because my business grows because of who I know. I don't cold-call. Every day, I get new clients because of who I know referrals. So I know, I understand that. But from government and from a government standpoint, I would just like to see, how do we solicit vendors? What's the bid process? How are we incorporating women-owned businesses, minority businesses? Because I know that Dr. Linda Gunn can act as a resource with that one young lady and be impartial. She lives in this town. She can help with that study. And she probably is not going to be nearly as expensive as whoever extra people that consultant is going to add from that firm.
Ms. Collins, do you have a comment about this particular ordinance that we're going to vote?
Well, I'm just throwing that out as part of that, as part of that. Because he's talking about the viability of the study and things that are going to come forward.
Right.
And things like that. So as we're doing these kinds of evaluations and if we're hiring people, I would just like to see a process where we're incorporating women businesses, minority businesses, so that people in Maryville can make money on these things. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the council?
I do have a question.
Mr. January?
Just in regards to, we're making these pay increases retroactive.
That's correct.
And I want to ask the attorney, is that something that's actually constitutional? I thought I read somewhere in the constitution, we can't make retroactive laws.
No, you can do retroactivity if the council approves of it.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, Mr. January, roll call, please.
Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uslak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Aye.
President Bella?
Aye.
Seven in favor.
Seven in favor. Motion carries. That completes our ordinances for the evening, sorry. We do have one resolution tonight, Resolution 24-15. It's a resolution providing the transfer of appropriation balances from among major budget classifications in the Town Council Department to the general fund, as requested by the proper officers, and forwarded to the Town Council for its action. Mr. Griffin, would you like to give us a quick...
Mr. President, I'd be happy to. I'm trying to refresh my recollection on that resolution as I look at it. Yes. I beg the council's pardon. Mr. President, members of the council, Madam Vice President, Mr. Clerk Treasurer. Pursuant to the purchase policy, I can take steps up to $15,000, as can every department head here now, clearly, as long as their budget will support it. We identified a codification contract, working in concert with the clerk treasurer. We actually got a quote on getting our code updated by the same codifier we have. Adjust the ordinances that we had to get adjusted for. We're going to run us in a neighborhood of about $3,800 and we're not nearly done with the year for amending and bringing up. That's only the ordinances we could identify that still needed to get in there. So this $18.94 per page rate, which is in our contract, that's as old as 1982, by the way. Or this new contract, which will have us at a flat fee of $4,950 for the year to update the code in unlimited time, which we're confident we're going to get the value out of. In order for that contract to be able to be viable, I need your permission to move from the 100 series to the 300 series without changing... There's no net change to the overall budget. There's just a change to the line or the object of expense under Indiana law necessary to support what I need. This 5,500 also includes a feature that the chief has been asking about, which will allow them time to update the code, but also put it on as if it's been published. So we'll meet the standard for some of the new ordinances with penalties that Indiana law requires us to meet for enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Thank you.
Chair of the motion for approval.
Still moved.
Second.
Voice from Mr. Pettit, seconded by Counselor Shee. Gosh. Was it Rhonda?
That was her, Rhonda.
Vice President Neal? Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, this is a simple resolution. A voice vote is adequate, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. The motion carries, Mr. Griffin.
I thank the council. And I believe the clerk treasurer joins me in that because it's much better to have that codifier work better than it was. That's acceptable.
It's definitely more reasonable, that's for sure.
That's for sure.
Moving on tonight, is there any old business before us? New business? Public comment? Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. We allow three minutes.
Okay, Darian Collins, I just wanted to come back about the splash pad. I really do hope that we're going to get that off the ground. I know I mentioned that in September, and I was hoping it was going to be cracking and going. Because now, you know, in the 90 degrees last week, we have no public pool here. We don't have a Y with a pool. The Gary Y, their pool, finally reopened last week. My plan, you know, my plan is my grandson and I will be at the Crown Point Y or the Gary Y because we don't have a pool.
and I will be at the Crown Point Y or the Gary Y, because we don't have a pool. But I do hope we'll get the splash pad going. And I have an acquaintance that works with American Water. She's not in the public affairs area, but I do hope, I'm glad to see Leona and others making those inroads to build corporate relationships with NIPSCO. I would hope that we put all our utilities, the American Water, the cable companies, the banks, but, you know, something like a splash pad and water. Let's try to have a relationship and talk to the folks at American Water and maybe get them to help with that endeavor. I hope that, you know, that's something we can do. But I hope by next summer, we have that splash pad going. Thank you.
Michael Minogue, Maryville, Indiana, 250, 68th place. Two things. One, I brought up the idea that the council needs to have an ethics policy that requires you to declare any conflicts of interest and recuse yourself from any votes. Apparently, you don't have one because nobody's made a comment about that. Second, for the Parks and Recreation Department, I went with my wife the other day to utilize the exercise equipment. You have no equipment she can use. She's under five foot tall. You need to get some exercise bikes and things like that for people who are under five feet tall. There's nothing there. She can't use it. And I know for a fact, my wife is not the only person in town, adult, who is under five feet. So if you want to worry about the ADA or other things like that, that would also apply. I'm not asking for a lot of money, probably $500 for a couple bikes. Thank you. And I would like to know, when are you going to develop a committee to write an ethics policy for the Town Council to say, you have to declare conflicts of interest and recuse yourself depending on the conflict?
I think we have to do that by law, don't we, Joe?
We've done those.
We've signed it.
I've signed one, Mike. I've signed a conflict of interest.
I look for it.
It should be in the clerk treasurer's office, because when Jean... Hang on, Mike. When Jean Guernsey was in office and Roseanne Antic was in office, we all signed conflict of interest. You can check my voting record. Anytime there's been a billboard that's come before this council, I have abstained from the vote because I work for a billboard company.
It needs to be public. I went to the...
Well, it begs the question, Mike, what are the conflicts? When are we going to abstain from votes because we do business with someone? If we do that, we're not going to get any activity done.
We're done.
I mean, you know?
That's incorrect.
Here, take this for example, Michael. We have a salary ordinance. All seven of our salaries are in that salary ordinance. Is that a conflict of interest that I'm voting on my salary?
That's publicly known.
It could be construed as a conflict of interest. I'm approving Keisha's salary, my salary, Rhonda's salary. Isn't that a conflict? That's a fiduciary conflict. That's why I abstain from votes on Lamar advertising, right? Because I make money from Lamar. I get paid by Lamar, so I should abstain.
We have a resident waiting. Talk to Sean afterwards. Mike, stay afterwards and talk...
Mike's one of my residents, so...
Okay. Well, you guys can talk after the meeting. We're being rude to the other... Mike, we're being rude to the other speakers, sir. Please. Sir, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Dennis Hunter. I'm from Gary, Indiana, and I'm a veteran. Over 21 years for the government. I was a federal officer, sergeant in the Army and a federal officer for the Department of Justice.
Thank you.
I was a GS8. You're welcome. And I was told I can come here and tell you guys about our vacation club we have, and it has a health mentorship program for young kids where they can learn how to work their business and make money and everything. So by the time they're 18, you know, they have money to go to college and do whatever they want to do. They don't have to depend on their parents. And the vacation club gives you residual income, financial freedom, generational wealth, and is willable to your kids. And the vacation packages are marvelous, and you don't, there's no contract or whatever you have to join or whatever. You don't even have to join the club. Then you can get discounts on hotels, rental cars, cruises, and all this stuff. It's amazing. And we do presentations to large groups, small groups, one-on-ones and everything. And when people see it, you know, they fall in love. I have a meeting they're trying to set up now with the mayor of Gary, East Chicago Mayor. They already, well, the chief of staff, she's already in on it, and she wanted to give me a meeting with the mayor when he comes back in town. And everybody's jumping on this thing. We're worldwide, and a lot of the cities and states around the United States are jumping on it. So we're trying to get Gary, Maryville, and everything on it. So that's all I have. Like I say, I got cards and everything, and I got brochures also. We do health and wellness products, CBD products without the THC in them, and it helps with pain. We have lotion. We have bombs. We have cream. We have roll-ons. We have the liquid, which is the strongest, 3,000 milligrams of CBD, and it's helping everybody with their pains and everything. I was at the post office, and all the mail carriers use the roll-on and stuff. So it's good products. We have a lot of things that can help you and help the youth and everything with finances and jobs, home-based businesses. You can work on your own. So they made it so, the club made it so, that you can't say no to this. It's something for everybody with no contract.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Brian Messarch, 201, 68th place. Chief, I want to thank you and all your officers. Thanks for honoring Tiffany Vest. What's going on with the vest?
So we actually got Point Blank to come out today, and they did a fitting. And they're also addressing my concerns of the new design on their vest, so we're moving forward.
That's great. Thank you. Appreciate the update. One thing I would like to bring forward is the idea, and I think it was President Bella who brought it up originally, was donating the land that the old Mill Pizza used to sit on to the firefighters for their memorial park. Is there any way that we could get that back towards the forefront and maybe push that forward so that...
Absolutely.
I think that our firefighters do awesome for us as well, so...
Kind of waiting for back from them on a design, so we can make sure it fits on the property, so...
I know, but sometimes the timing, like, we could give them the property, and then they can figure out what they want to do with it. That'd be fantastic. The idea that we are coming together and debating vigorously about what the town should be doing to do things positive, we should, like, consider some things. And one of the things is this is, if Mr. Griffin, if I catch him out laying down the humps in the road, I will know that he actually does everything. But I want everyone to understand that...
Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Messarch. Thank you. Michael, can you wear jeans tomorrow, please?
That was not... But the issue is this, is there are very little people and very little hands to do all of the work. And there's a lot of work. People, we know that the police could use more. We know the fire could use more. We know the street department could use more. We need more hands. We need to start doing things in a way that we can be... People are fighting to have employment with our town and do things involving residents. And we might have to hear some of the things about splash pads and whatnot. But the Parks Department needs things like bike clubs and other programs for residents. If we had these things and we felt our services and our court system was in place, maybe we wouldn't complain so much about all the other stuff, but it adds fuel to the aggravation. We need to start working together on making Maryville better as a whole.
Hi. My name is Pat Thompson at 1414 West 74th Place in Maryville. And I'm just here to ask if we could reconsider putting a pool in the Dean and Barbara White Center for the adults that need the pool for exercises, you know, for the arthritis and all the other stuff that we got going on, that we could locally go to the pool and not have to go to Crown Point, where it's already crowded because there's so many people, or in my case, have to drive to Holbert, because we don't have a pool. And I don't know why that wasn't considered, or if it was considered, when you were building the Barbara White Dean Center, because we need that. And the other thing is, when I listen about the parks and the money that's available, then I think our parks should look a lot better than what they do. And they are so limited for the kids. And right across from my house on 74th Place, we have a park. And it's, I don't know where these kids came from, but it's a bunch of kids now. And it's just not enough equipment out there for them to play with. So if we could just consider our children, the youth, and them needing to do something. All of my kids are grown, but I do have grandkids. And it's just nice to keep kids busy so we can avoid trouble. And the old saying, an idle mind is the devil workshop.
Oh, yes.
So if we have activities for them to do, it's better for everybody. And I just think we need to reconsider and think of the community. And sometimes I think the council forgets the community. And you're here to serve us and the things that we need, and I think that's fair that we get those things. So I just want you to consider, even like the president talking to people when they get up, don't be rude. Don't treat people like they're not people or that they're not human, because that's not a good feeling for us because you represent us. And we should be able to come to this council with our concerns, and they be addressed properly, and us not talked to any kind of way. And it hasn't happened to me, but I've seen it with others. And I think we can all do better. And we need to do better.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. King, is there a way that we can get the Public Works Department...
Mr. January, I want to speak.
Yeah, please, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way that we can get the Public Works Department to take some of that equipment and dig a big hole and improvise with some sort of pool that people can play with until... I'm serious.
Well, let's clarify. Mr. President, if I could answer the lady's comment. Thank you for your... The idea behind the Dean and Barbara White, we analyzed putting in a pool. The pool would have cost an additional $5 million in the way the building was designed, along with what's called operation and maintenance. Keep in mind, and we had this conversation, the town, through its former Parks Director, Lisa's been with us a long time, Jan Orlich went over to the park, to the school superintendent. I know there's one pool. I've heard there's a second pool at Maryville High School. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so all of our tax dollars go to pay 51% over to Maryville High School. Why can't Maryville residents use those two pools at the high school? That's a question for the new superintendent and the school board again. Why are we not allowing Maryville residents to go to Maryville High School and use the pools?
Well, they took out the senior.
Exactly. Yeah, they took that out.
They out.
Yep, they did.
Well, why don't we go to Holbert and do a collaboration, because Holbert allows their residents to do it. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We just need to have somebody get on the phone and talk to Holbert and see what they do, and let's see if we can do what they do.
Is there any other public comment tonight?
No, you don't have to go to Holbert. They have a program.
Mr. President, can I make some comment?
Go ahead, Lisa. Sure.
Thank you. We tried doing open swims with Maryville High School. I, myself, sat there on certain days for about three and a half to four hours, and I got no one to show up to swim. And I believe we also put out a survey when we started to do this master plan with the Dean and Barbara White Community Center.
Yeah, we did.
And we asked your opinions, and believe it or not, most of you had said you would rather have a fitness center over a pool.
That's right.
Mr. President, can I speak?
Absolutely.
I have been a resident here in Maryville for about 18 years. I'm sorry, but I never received a survey about the Dean and Barbara Center, about coming to Maryville to use their pool. I have never seen that. So maybe that needs to be revisited, very much so, and make sure it's marketed so that every resident will be able to speak their voice on those items. So we might not be able to go back in and put a pool in the Dean and Barbara Center, but we very well should be able to use the school's facilities, period.
Does the Dr. Dean have a pool? Can we... Says we're giving them one, so you...
No, they don't have a pool.
Okay, guys, moving on to announcements here. Town Council meeting next Tuesday, July 9th at 6:30. Firework shows, July 3rd at Maryville High School at Sundown. July 4th parade is on the 4th, of course, at 11:00 AM, starting at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center and going south on Broadway to 80th Place. And the job fair is coming up on July 24th from 11:30 to 2:30. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.